I guess the girls can be on top of things.
They must not have them already.
Open? Oh, okay. I hope so.
Hi, how are you feeling?
Good.
Thank you.
Only you. Well, there is a schedule they put out. I don't know, I don't, off the top of my head, don't know what it is. But we had the, we had the initial meeting and they have a schedule for it. So you, I, I don't know what it is. Um, yeah, which, uh, I think.
Oh.
Sign or no, yeah, well, the sign or just the be whoever's, yeah, no, I understood. And Monica said she'd do most of it, so. And Harrison was here, you know, we're. We're still, we're still shuffling papers. That laptop ought to have one.
How's it going?
Who's in your mailbox that's got stuff to something? Um.
Henry, the whole thing? Okay. If there was an issue before this, I don't know if you're aware of that or not. Today is July.
When she picked up the stuff out of her box, it came, it stuck to it, so it wasn't in there this morning. Cause I got your.
I got seven thirty, Pat, we ready?
Cause I got your mail this morning, I know it wasn't in there.
Some good Pokemon, I hope. I appreciate it. Okay, I always wear a suit. Uh, I got seven thirty, you ready? All right, if, if we got somebody up at the CMC, uh, wave a camera at me. There we go, okay. I'm gonna call this July, I'm gonna call this July meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council to order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Uh, we don't have any speakers up for tonight. Uh, I believe there is one presentation the mayor's going to start with.
There's another presentation.
I know. I, I, I'm on top of it, Debbie.
Good evening, everybody, audience, uh, our huge viewing audience. Uh, tonight is a, uh, well, it's a happy night in that we get to present an award, but it's a sad night in that we're saying goodbye to one of our valued councilmen before the end of his term. Uh, sometimes life takes us in different directions and, uh, one of our councilmen is moving away. I, on a personal level, am sad to see this, cause back in two thousand ten, when I ran my first campaign, uh, I had the pleasure and honor to walk alongside Councilman Scott Strong, cause we shared many of the same values and views and issues at that time. And then I was fortunate enough to run with him for the next two elections following that. Scott has served this town with extreme diligence. He's brought some new ideas to the table. It was gracing in his youth and his passion and everything he brought to the town. We were in his debt. We wish him and his family well. And as everybody knows, it's not just a councilman running, it's their entire family. And I don't know if the kids are in the audience. They are out there. I don't see the oldest kid though, so, okay. But I see Braden and Maddie and his beautiful wife Kimber. Kimber, thank you guys for lending Scott to us all those evenings, all those events. We appreciate all he and you did for the town. Scott, could you join me? I'd like to present you with a plaque. These are some black plaques on there. Scott was also by default our IT guy. Whenever we had IT issues, we had to go to Scott. We didn't make a move without him. So, on behalf of the town of Mount Airy and the citizens of Mount Airy and the entire town council that I know shares my views, we present this to Scott D. Strong, town council member from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen. That's eight years of long service, sir. In recognition, in recognition of your dedic-, your dedicated diligent and unselfish service as a Mount Airy Town Council member, the contributions you have made to the town are greatly appreciated and will always be remembered and it should say and will enhance the town. On behalf of the mayor, town council and town staff, Scott, it's been an honor, sir.
Sir, appreciate it. Well, this is great to get a plaque. Uh, I like the black plaque, that's real nice. Um, I kind of had a lot of stuff that was said, uh, at the last council meeting, uh, by Councilman Health, so thank you for passing on my message. I'm sorry I couldn't have delivered it in person. My family and I were actually out, uh, shopping for our home and so very stressful time, but we got through that, just as now sort of sad and stressful for having to leave family and friends in the town. Um, I've been very appreciative of everybody in the town, the businesses, um, not only to my family, um, the friendships that we've gained, uh, working with, uh, not only the fine council members, um, town staff, uh, the businesses and everyone else here. And, um, you know, we're really sorry to go. Um, but I would just say that, um, we've really enjoyed, uh, living here. Sorry. Sarah, look into my wife and start tearing up. But, um, no, it's, it's been great being here and trying to contribute to the town and seeing all the wonderful positive things that we've done. And I take such pride in seeing that and knowing that when we come back and visit, I can't wait to see what else is here. Because with all of our family and friends, we plan to come back alive. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. We all appreciate your service. And we need a numbers guy to fill that gap now. Uh, somebody who's really picky when it comes to numbers, which is Scott's, Scott's incredible strength that he's really added to us. All right, while we're doing that, uh, let me bring up this, which, uh, Bruce Wall's passed on to me. This deals with the election. While I'm, while I'm thinking about this, the first nomination meeting will be July twenty-third at seven PM here. Second nomination meeting will be July thirtieth at seven o'clock here. The election will be September tenth and take place at the Farmers Activities Building on Twin Arch Road. Polls are open from semi- seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots will be available at Town Hall as of August seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Last data register to vote for the special election will be August thirteenth at five PM.
So, Peter, just clarification. Um, is this run similar to how we've done normal elections? Just for clarification for everybody, that the twenty-third will be open and by the thirtieth it's considered closed?
It will close, there'll be a meeting at, on the end, I guess at the end of the thirtieth or the next, or the next morning, I'm not sure which, Debbie.
Everything's running exactly the same, exactly the week.
And then people still.
You have a week to come, you have a week to come in and get nominated. Yeah, like we have been recently.
Just wanted to make sure there was nothing different.
It's just our new schedule. Just our new schedule. All right, approval of council meeting minutes. Got the July fourth town council meeting minutes and the closed meeting minutes. Uh, I will move that we accept both sets of minutes. Bob? Bob's seconding, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Look unanimous to me. All right, Mount Airy Police Department, chief.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Chief Reitz with the Mount Airy Police Department report, uh, for the month of June. Uh, during the month of June, we attended six separate meetings and trainings during the month. Uh, also, we had the Lions Club Carnival, which was June fourth through the ninth. During that time, we even had one juvenile apprehension for an assault and then we had three separate apprehensions for CDS violations, uh, which resulted in three civil citations being issued. Uh, we also had the Celtic Festival on June sixteenth. Only incident we had as a result of that was one minor accident at, uh, Twin Ridge at, uh, at, uh, twenty-seven, and that was easily controlled. Of course, we had the general traffic problems that's associated with it. Um, traffic was fluid till the grounds filled up. Then once the grounds filled up and it started backing up out of the carnival grounds onto Twin Arch and then up on the twenty-seven and down, both north and southbound twenty-seven. Um, once that happened, we positioned our patrol units in the area so they could be seen. Really hard to negate things there because they're all going to the same place and it's one way in and one way out, so. I actually have some ideas. I want to approach town staff and talk some things for upcoming events to maybe try to help to maybe minimize traffic problems. But we're never gonna get rid of them all together there until, you know, you have, you know, a little bit more than one way in and one way out.
It's gonna be crowded on July third for the fireworks? Come on, chief.
It's gonna be crowded. Uh, community outreach, uh, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Snyder, uh, for graduating from Class Four Thirty-eight of the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety, uh, School of Police Staff and Command. This is a very intensive ten-week course designed to advance excellence in public safety. Um, without a doubt, it enhances the professionalism of the Mount Airy Police Department. Sergeant Snyder's attending, uh, this training will no doubt improve the services that we provide to our community. Uh, National Night Out is scheduled for August seventh, just a reminder, it's a little over a month away. Uh, the times on this, I was corrected from the last time Wayne Harris let me know. I made a mistake. It's five thirty to eight thirty that evening, it's three hours. Uh, we'll be at the Mount Airy Fire Company, uh, Carnival Grounds. There's many activities for kids and families, uh, many exhibits will be there. I'd like to give a special thanks, uh, to Heather Smith and Wayne Harris, who put a tremendous amount of effort into getting this organized for the police department, and we're hoping that's a very successful event for community relations. Another, uh, issue, we have assisted with active assailant training. Walmart, uh, Corporal Halterman and volunteer Wayne Harris assisted the, them, uh, with the stores employees in the active assailant training. The store management held the training and we basically provided guidance in what to expect during an event such as that related to police and first responder response. Uh, we also had an, uh, a CRAZE presentation at Calvary United Methodist Church. Um, and that's, CRAZE is the acronym for Citizens' Response to Active Shooter Events. Uh, First Sergeant John Hill from the Maryland State Police made the presentation. Uh, it was offered to over seventy congregations and it was well intended, attended. We had roughly over, a little over a hundred people there, I believe, for that, for that, uh, presentation. Again, special thanks goes out to our depart-, Department Chaplain, Harry Johnson, and Wayne Harris, who both organized the event and it was, again, well attended. Monthly overdose summary, I'm happy to report, there's nothing to report. So. Knock on wood. Department statistics, uh, during the month of June, we handled nine hundred and nine events. Uh, traffic enforcement, we issued forty-two traffic citations, one hundred and thirty-three warnings, thirty-five safety equipment repair orders. There was zero DUI arrest, uh, there was two traffic-related arrests, and we made a hundred and thirty-eight total traffic stops. As far as criminal enforcement, uh, we made fourteen criminal arrests and that included one juvenile, on view arrest, uh, one adult CDS arrest. Six arrest warrants were served, uh, two criminal summonses, three criminal citations and four civil citations. And that will be the chief's report. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, chief.
Another presentation coming up.
We're gonna go a little out of sequence tonight. Uh, actually, this is planned more for around Memorial Day. Sometimes in Mount Airy, and we were talking about Scott, his legacy and the legacy that we all share together. Uh, part of that legacy is our new police force. And sometimes you get it right, and I think that we all agree over the past year or so, since we've talked to chief on board, we got it right. We really got it right. And the officers, uh, felt strongly that their leader, and I feel the same, Chief Doug Reitz, it was no doubt, he was the reason we got it right. They wanted to give a tribute to Doug, cause we all know that, uh, we have to come from good roots. And Doug, apparently you come from some very strong roots and your officers would like to honor you with a plaque that they put together, uh, acknowledging your roots. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to, uh, Doug Kurt. And, uh, congratulations on the accomplishment for you to make this presentation to Chief Doug Reitz. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug's father, uh, served in World War Two and a lot of the medals that are presented on this plaque were given posthumously to his wife. So, we put it together on the plaque and we'd like to give it to you. Nice.
And that's where our police force originally started. Look at that.
Just real quick, I really appreciate this. I'm kinda speechless, I don't know what to say. I wasn't really expecting it, so. Uh, thank you, thank the guys. I really appreciate that.
Doug, there's a small inscription. Can you just give a brief summary of what that inscription is? What it says?
You would ask me without my glasses.
We, everybody here over thirty has cheaters.
I don't.
All right, he's had LASIK.
I have not.
Okay, he's, he's being hard to deal with.
I am.
You are.
Yeah, you can read it. Otherwise, we'll be here for a long time. So it says, commemorating the military service of Joseph Bernard Reitz Junior, May twen-, May tenth, nineteen twenty-five to October two thousand four. Mr. Reitz enlisted with the US Army on September twelfth, nineteen forty-three as a member of the Ninety-first Combat Infantry Division. Joseph Reitz Junior was awarded a Bronze Star Medal, Expert Combat Infantry Badge with Oak Leaf Cluster, a World War Two Victory Medal, Army Good Conduct Medal and three stripes for overseas duty. He also received the European African Medal, or Middle Eastern Campaign Ribbon with Battle Stars for his participation in North Africa Campaign, the Sicily Campaign, the Anzio Campaign, Rome, the Arno Campaign and the Po Valley Campaign. He participated in the liberation of Rome, where he witnessed the execution of the Italian dictator Benito Mussolini by Italian partisans. Mr. Reitz was among the first US troops to cross the Po River into Po Valley in northern Italy. After World War Two ended, he was assigned to, uh, assigned to occupation forces in Yugoslavia to enforce martial law against martial tito's forces. And Joseph Reitz returned home on November eleventh, nineteen forty-five. And in May of nineteen forty-six, Mr. Reitz was employed by Hahn Brothers of Westminster as a meat cutter and was the manager of Frozen Food Locker Plant. In nineteen fifty-five, he was employed by the United Insurance Company of America as a sales agent, claim adjuster and staff manager for the Westminster Frederick Hagerstown and Hanover Region until nineteen seventy-two. That's when I was born. Upon leaving United, he was employed as a meat cutter for various supermarkets until, until nineteen eighty-one. Mr. Reitz was a proud Life member of the Carroll American Legion Post Number Thirty-One, where he held various positions, including post commander in nineteen sixty-two. He was instrumental in forming the junior drum in Bugle Corps, the Starlight. Mr. Reitz often volunteered his time to youth activities such as Little League Baseball and Boy Scouts. He was awarded the Presidential Unit Citation while Cub Master of Pack Number Four Four Eight. Joseph Reitz returned to Westminster High School and passed his exams to RISD to receive his high school diploma at age fifty-eight.
I tell you, Doug, there's no doubt that you came from such strong roots. That's amazing war record. Thank you.
All right, the Fire Company report is next. They could not be here tonight, but I'll just quickly read their report. On the rescue side, Carroll, first due a hundred and nine, mutual aid six, total a hundred and fifteen. Frederick, twenty first due, twenty-seven mutual aid, forty-seven total. Howard, uh, five first due, four mutual aid, nine total. Montgomery County, nothing on the rescue side. Uh, for fire, Carroll County, first due five, mutual aid four, total nine. Frederick, first due eleven, mutual aid one, total twelve. Howard, uh, no first due, three mutual aids. Montgomery County, nothing. So the totals for Carroll are one twenty-four, Frederick fifty-nine, Howard twelve, Montgomery zero for a total number of calls of one hundred and ninety-five for the month of June. And before we read citizen comments, I'm gonna read this, um, from the Water Department, not from me, from the actual people who really do the work at the Water Department. "It has come to our attention that numerous water bills, over a hundred, were torn in half at the processing facility in Baltimore. If you're unable to pay your bill with the section that you received or would like information from the side that you didn't receive, please contact us at Town Hall." And if you notice, there's, there's a perforation already in the bills. Apparently, they were ripped down that perforation, so you're gonna get a bill, but it will not have the, the tear end on it, which has some data that you may want. So you may only get part of your bill. If you do, call Town Hall, they'll fill you in on all the extra details. And let's move on to, um, community concerns, citizen comments. This is a time we set aside for anybody who wants to address the council on any issue and. Yeah, we, I was gonna call you anyways.
So this is Dorothy Fenders. You all know her. She's a Mount Airy resident and the matriarch of our society. My husband, Bill, who does everything I ask him to. And I'm Arianna Elliott and, um, I've been the chair of the Celtic Festival for several years. We just wanna give you a quick update on, uh, what happened and yes, we tied up traffic once again. But that's a good sign. Uh, we had probably over six thousand people. Uh, that doesn't count all the baseball people who came in and out also. So that's another, however many, um, occupying the, the grounds. We certainly missed you, Mayor Pat, at our shortbread bake-off. You missed sampling thirty-eight entries. You would've had a terrible tummy ache.
I have a pretty bad tummy ache anyway.
We wouldn't have helped. Um, we had, uh, eight, um, pipe and drum bands there this year, mass bands. It was wonderful. We had sunshine for the first time in six years. We had a beautiful, beautiful day. We raised a, a fair amount of money for our, our charity, which was Hero Dogs. Uh, so that, uh, that was really good. Um, one of the more interesting things that happened was we have a, a gentleman who operates a scythe and that's something, it's an old implement and it looks like the old Grim Reaper scythe that you mow down. And so Alfonso Diaz is from the Astorius Society, um, with origins in Spain. And we challenged him last year to a weed whacker. Him versus the weed whacker. We grew a patch out in the, uh, fire grounds, way down in the corner, about two foot tall. My poor son, who I put up as bait, uh, had a commercial weed whacker. They said, "Go." And Alfonso was mowing along. The weed whacker was not doing very well. About halfway down, Alfonso stops, looks back at my son, smiles, takes his sharpener out, sharpens his blade and keeps on going. I think his comment was something about, "Next year, get a riding lawnmower." So it, but that's one of our traditions, is to bring living history to, to light, uh, and particularly in the, in the Celtic Nation. So that was one of the more amusing things we had going on, along with, uh, our kids' area was overrun with kids throwing cabers and doing all kinds of sheep purting and all kinds of things. Um, so we had a wonderful time. We thank you all for, uh, hosting us again.
The traditional foods, you had all the.
Oh, we had all the traditional foods. We had a lovely whiskey tasting and miscellaneous distillery hosted three of our whiskey tastings this year. Yes, so we had a lot of, um, local involvement. So, uh, thank you all. Dorothy, would you like to?
Well, I wouldn't dare come here this evening without bringing you all some shortbread.
We just love hearing you speak. That's, uh. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We'll get that, Scott, if you could, and, uh, make sure Peter gets his.
And Larry, Larry was giving a talk up there on Mackenzie the Caboose. I watched his talk.
That's right. Yes, we have, we have that noted in our highlights.
I ate lots of varieties and pasties.
Thank you.
Yes.
We would like to thank you for once again making Mount Airy your home. I know you could've went anywhere. You moved from Frederick and you've been here for six years?
Seven.
Seven years.
Seven years.
Six for me, seven total. But, uh, thank you for making Mount Airy your home. We love having you.
Well, thank you so much.
And these are good.
Of course they are. They're right from the, the best short, and we don't let her enter our bake-off.
It wouldn't be fair.
She would win hands down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, wanna talk, give me a concerns, uh, citizen comments? Bill? Think we need some whiskey to go with this. Unfortunately, I don't have any. This, this is just a brief summary. Bill Butts with, uh, Mount Airy Planning Commission. Uh, Roxanne Hempel and I also serve on the statewide, um, Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. And this past Wednesday, we had the opportunity to represent MPCA at the American Planning Association Maryland Chapter Annual Conference. And so what I wanted to share with you was just a lot of very, very positive things. Uh, Mount Airy is becoming evident as, uh, taking initiative in terms of community development. And so there's a lot of interest in our downtown master plan and, uh, the, uh, the objectives and the goals of that, because there are a lot of other communities that have the same needs and the same challenges and are looking to us for our leadership in that regard. Also, MPCA has taken upon itself a goal for the, the coming year to address training and development needs of citizen planners in municipal planning commissions across the state. What that simply means is we have put out to them surveys to ask for their feedback on, in terms of training, in terms of development, in terms of opportunities to get better at what you do and your role. What would you ask for support and help in that regard? And MPCA Board is dedicated to providing that. In one-to-one contact with APA Maryland Representatives at, uh, their conferences past Wednesday, I heard lots of affirmation and lots of attaboys for our willingness to take on that challenge. And also a lot of feedback that said, "Once you get this in place, we so appreciate that in terms of what that could mean for our local planning commissions, but could you also create this as a pilot for other commissions?" And I said, "Absolutely. And we probably want to have a discussion with MML in that regard, because we're all in the same team." We wanna get better at the local level in terms of community involvement, in terms of volunteerism, in terms of moving all of our communities forward. And quite frankly, Mount Airy is seen as a leader in that regard. So I thought I'd share that with you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Monica, can I ask a question? It's been a while and I probably forgot. Isn't there a certain basic level? Bill's talking about more advanced and certainly I agree with it. Isn't there a basic level of training that all, uh, planning commission members have to take and pass? Is there a course they have to take, either online?
I don't know if it's required necessarily, but I think it's offered.
I thought it was actually a requirement.
I think it was required one time years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't know if it's required. I don't know if it's specifically required anymore.
A course that you're supposed to take.
Yeah, Bill's.
I thought there was a required course.
As soon as a planning commission member is appointed, okay, they have a certain limited period of time to take the, the required training.
That's, I know it's a basic course, it doesn't, but it's something, it's something that we didn't have before.
And what we've asked them is, in addition to that, what additional training and development do you see as being valuable? And we process that feedback with the help of Maryland Department of Planning, and we're acting on that.
Yeah, I'd heard that, but I just wanted to get back to the basics. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, procedurally, I mean, people who've never, don't know anything about how to do planning.
This is back when I started in two thousand and two. There was no training. But I'm glad we're getting some, and we're getting more.
There was a required course when, and they do it on Sunday. It's one of the Sunday courses that Maryland Department of Planning does in that convention. And I recently had to take it.
But the members have to be there.
But there's also, there was an online one that they got into again.
Sorry.
Okay, I didn't mean to digress far on this one.
Any other citizen concerns, community comments? Here we go. Come up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Kate Denise. I'm the owner of Mommy Magic Cakes here in town. And I have a concern about receiving warning letters and fines on banners I've flown that I have approved permit applications for.
Was this recent? I know you had some issues a while back.
It was.
Yeah, I just saw the email today.
I can't speak to it, 'cause I'm in the...
Yeah. Your feeling is you were within the window of your permit?
Well, I had applied for a permit to fly my cupcake feather banner from May twenty-eighth to June twenty-eighth. It was approved, and I received a warning letter on the twenty-first and apparently a fine on the twenty-first.
So we'll go ahead and look into that, and if it was in fact issued in error, your fine will be revoked.
Yeah, whenever something like that comes up, just call Town Hall.
I did.
Okay.
I did call Town Hall. No one was available, so I sent an email to the email address with a copy of the approved permit and the warning letter, and I did not receive any email back.
I'm not prepared to address it at this moment. Can you send me an email and let me know who you called and who told you they weren't available? We'll have it taken care of for you tomorrow?
Sure. I can do that for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did see your little cake banner, though.
I did.
But I knew that we had, I think we had actually approved them in our new sign ordinance.
I don't think that's actually adopted by the council yet. I think the planning commission, the planning commission has vetted it. They've worked, this is to answer your question.
Yeah, here's your sign ordinance answer.
So we, the planning commission has taken the sign ordinance in pieces, so the planning commission has looked into approving them, but it hasn't actually been adopted yet.
It hasn't approved them. That may be your problem, but we'll look into it.
Well, I received...
She got a banner permit, is what she's saying.
We'll, yeah, okay, we'll go. Banner and feathers, we'll look into it.
It says on there, it says feather banner on there, it says it's approved from the twenty-eighth to the twenty-second.
Sounds like you got a good case.
We'll get you fixed up.
Carl?
I didn't wanna interrupt the discussion going on here. Carl Munder, two thousand and two, Philbrook Lane, Mount Airy, Maryland, says it seems to be police congratulation night, so I'm gonna jump on that banner table a little bit here. First off, I'd like to thank all the officers of the Mount Airy Police Department for the dedication to the town of Mount Airy and the service that they provide. Second off, I would like to also thank, Brownie Troop forty-twelve had a local, had a tour of the police station last Friday, so I would like to thank Matt Betts for setting it up, the police department for doing it, and then Officer Long, I believe, Adam Long, for conducting it. Unfortunately, we weren't able to see the puppy dog because there was a call. He showed up, but there was a call that everybody had to go on. So maybe next time, we'll be able to get to see the puppy dog. Hey, the girls, a bunch of eight-year-olds liked the doggy, so that's what the main thing was. Should've saw their faces. As soon as they heard the dog was gonna show up, everyone's face lit up and everything else, so it was good. And also to thank Officer Long again for enduring all the questions that the girls asked him, so it was fun. But I originally came to say, it seems from the last town meeting that the town council of town is beginning to search for locations for the police station, for more permanent residents of the police station. I would just like to mention a potential location for it, if it hasn't been looked at or considered before. I mentioned it during the, when the Goodwill store was looking into town, a good use, alternative use for where the Goodwill wanted to go, was the police station for the state police. It's the point, what I call the point at North Main and Twenty-Seven. Basically, it's a good location, provides, you know, quick access to multiple locations within the town boundaries via Twenty-Seven, Main Street, Candace to Buffalo. I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential location, too. Just, that's it.
Okay.
Easy one. I'm not complaining about it. I'd also like to thank the mayor for taking care of some signage, potential signage issues a couple of weeks ago on Buffalo Road for the Sterling Lake community.
Well, thanks for riding with me and making sure I took care of them.
Thank you for...
Carl, if you ever need a backup dog, I got one.
Okay, cool.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on. Ordinance resolutions. Ordinance two thousand and eighteen-nine, budget amendment to allocate funds for a special election for the town due to the resignation of Councilman Strong. I will move we accept this ordinance.
I guess I'll second some time leaving.
Although, actually, I guess we could wait on this technically, because we have money for one election in the budget, just not two. That's the... Debbie's going, "No, don't mess me up." So, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous?
You all could say aye. I have some.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen-seven, authorizing the consumption and possession in open containers of alcoholic beverages on public property for the Hot Summer Nights event on seven twenty-one eighteen. I will move we accept that. Have a second?
Do you, are you gonna second?
No, go ahead.
I'll second.
All right. For those who don't know, we, just as a process, whenever anything like this is gonna take place on town property, the council has to just do a resolution approving it. That's why we do these every couple of months. We did one last month for...
October.
Oh, for Oktoberfest, so. Any discussion?
I have one question. I didn't see anywhere here where it is.
Talking about the area, I thought it usually says Prospect Road.
Well, my understanding is they're not gonna close the street for this, so it's gonna be completely on the railroad property.
That's, okay.
Yeah, there's no street closure to go with this.
Okay.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Bob, were you an aye?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Unfinished business. Councilman Strong had, I guess, over a while, raised several issues, and he wanted to just kinda wrap them up. I think Monica already answered the sign ordinance issue.
Yep.
That's where that is. I can, these top three, Flatiron, Center Street, and the MDXOP, I know those are all kind of on the back burner, waiting for the downtown master plan to come through. That will kinda tell us what we're gonna do with Center Street, what we're gonna do with the Flatter.
But not back burner. I think it's all semantic.
It's waiting till we get that expert report.
It's in the forefront. We are currently holding charrette, so no back burner.
I think that is part, if I'm correct.
It's just the wording. I know what you meant.
These things were added to it, and they were part of the scope.
They were part of the scope.
I think, I think one of the things that I saw, matter of fact, I just saw it today, which I'll applaud you for this, Monica, is that I know that there's encouragement for citizens to come and see the Flatiron Building.
That was the mayor's suggestion.
Oh, yeah.
I just saw your name attached.
Go in the Flatiron Building, please.
But it was the fact that people come to see it and...
It's important for people to know, to be factual. When we discuss this property, it's very easy to drive by something and make an assumption of how useful or non-useful it may be, but I am encouraging residents, I'm already seeing some posts that are surprising, but we are opening it up so people can physically, it's your building. We want you to look at it. It's your opportunity to have a say, but please become educated, especially before you post about one position or the other. Walk through the building, okay? Be careful getting to the building. It is dangerous, but please walk through the building.
And to that end, two other things I wrote down, which are not on here, so I apologize, but I'll say it now, was that there's been a lot of improvements and changes with the museum, the train station. So I don't know if you wanna say anything about what's been going on there, 'cause there's been a lot of activity.
Well, just briefly, they are, we are planning for an August opening. We do wanna make sure we coordinate that, because there's one person that has to be there, and that's gonna be Councilman Ken Phibus. And I hope year-round, in some way, if not, we're gonna Skype you in or something, because you were a big part of that, and everybody here was a big part of that. And Doc O'Brien, while he doesn't ever stand out or wanna stand out, he's been over there dedicating so much time to this. I think Larry even threw a coat of paint up.
I was gonna say, every time I walk in, Mr. Hushouse seems to be there painting.
Yeah, so Larry's...
Painting a door or something.
So that's hands-on, so, no, Scott, that's moving along well. And I do believe that all the items from the historical museum have been moved over. So we're looking for an opening, and it'll be a grand opening for the community, but we wanna do it right. We have a little something special planned.
And I think the only other thing that I wrote down here was, the second one, was the parking lot across from the plumery that we had talked about those spaces before.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer the time, because we keep going back and forth on emails, and that's a little struggle, but you're right.
I emailed Rob Scranton maybe the last two weeks.
It's the one on the far side of Prospect.
Correct.
Okay.
And I made a proposal along the lines of our, you know, our meeting two months ago when we were together, and he said he's still reviewing it and should get back to me. He hasn't forgotten me and all of that. I do know, fairness to him, he was a bit tied up with the green tree issue that most of his focus, so.
And I think it's important, Scott, and I wanna thank you, 'cause I think this is a part of Scott's legacy, that we move forward on a lot of things in this town. You know, they say the best way never to get in trouble is not to do anything, but this council didn't take that position, and Scott was a part of that. So all these items that we are moving forward on, you know, are part of legacy, and thanks for asking for the update.
No problem.
We're diligently working on it.
The last one you had on there was Harrison LeSheer.
Yep.
Basically, there's still, people are going back between our attorney and their attorney.
I know that was here when I first got elected, and it seems to be here when I'm...
That's on the back burner.
And Scott, one more thing. I did get a call yesterday from Councilman Phibus. He wanted me to congratulate you on your, you know, length of term and everything, and he's looking forward to maybe running into you when you come back up.
All right, that'll be good. Thank you.
Okay, we got a reduction in bonding for Lot Eight to Anarch Business Park. Developers request it, fifteen thousand, three twenty-one thirty-six. Staff recommends that that is the amount that we release. I will move that we release as recommended. Got a second from Bob? Any discussion? Must be good. Scott didn't say anything.
I'm good. I looked at it already.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous? All right, mayor and council reports. Mr. Mayor?
About six months ago, I was at this podium, and I announced my diagnosis of cancer. Six months later down the road, thanks to you, the community, prayers that just blew me away. I was on church chains. I received cards and letters, and it was no doubt the power of prayer that took what was once a bleak prognosis, turned it around. I am one hundred percent disease-free at this point. It's no doubt, thanks to the prayers, I thank God, and I thank this community, and our Cracker Jack team from Johns Hopkins, too. So it's great. Thank you so much for that. I'd like to thank this council, Peter Held, who looked after me during this illness. Certain times, I couldn't be there. They all stepped up. They were respectful. And they just, they did their jobs. We all did our jobs. Staff stepped in whenever they needed to. They covered it. And there was only minor absence, mainly when I was out for surgery, but everybody stepped up and pulled together as a team, and that's what we're supposed to do. And I would dedicate gratitude to this council and to the staff for doing that as well, so thank you so much. Moving forward, it's been a busy time, as I've been off work. I've been able to spend a lot of time downtown hall. We have been doing a lot of interviews, almost continually, for several positions. I attended a grand opening for a new cancer treatment center in town. As you know, that we are becoming more and more of a medical...
That's a dialysis center?
Dialysis center here in town, and it really, not only it services our community, but people in the environment. It can bring people out of Mount Airy to our town, and, you know, not that we want people to have this, but over sixteen thousand Marylanders are afflicted with this disease every year. So it's unfortunately very much a need, and we're providing that service in Mount Airy. So I'm happy that we're providing that service here in Mount Airy, along with our cancer center and some of our other treatment centers. And we have a lot of fitness things going in Mount Airy, so a lot of healthy things. Jason is leading up the Healthy Mount Airy incentive, so Mount Airy is definitely a place to get healthy, and if you're not healthy, to get some service, so we appreciate that. We just recently had a downtown arts event, so I'm gonna thank Ashley and, gosh, I had Katie and whoever else was involved. Ashley stepped out. I don't know where she had, that was a beautiful event. I got down here a little late, and as y'all can see, the ribbons on the railings out here, they did a fantastic job.
It was, it was a great event. I was really impressed.
Yeah, it was just, it's so nice to have that in Mount Airy. We didn't close the street, so that worked out good. I know Wayne, he's not here tonight, but Wayne, Wayne is here. Wayne's everywhere. You know, like Michael Caine is in every movie. Wayne is at every event or doing something, and so is Dick, and I see they're sitting together tonight. And Terry is always out there promoting the arts. Thank you, Terry. And let me see, where else? I had another note here. We have opened up the Flatiron Building, as Scott talked about. I think it's very important, as we go through this neighborhood process, this downtown process, we've already had one community workshop that was very well-attended. We're gonna have several more. This is your opportunity, and I hope this doesn't come off as wrong. Please don't go on Facebook and just make a post without knowledge. Get out there, do your homework, get involved, show up at these charrettes. Let your voice be heard in the right way, not just throwing stuff up on Facebook that really inflames people that may not otherwise know. Be part of the process. You have an opportunity. We're giving you an opportunity to be part of the process, and we need you to be part of that process. So the Flatiron Building will be open through the sixth. There's options available, so take part in your town. If you have any questions, call me personally. Thank you all very much. Peter?
Was there one reappointment?
Oh, yeah, there was. I think it was Donna Marie Needle to Economic Development.
That was the only one I remember. I will move we accept that recommendation. Second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right. Beautification, parks and rec. Larry?
All right, thanks. And Flatiron Building is three to six. Is that the time, Pat? Three to six?
Oh, heck, I just come up with the ideas. They do the...
It's open all day. It's open through the sixth of...
Through the sixth. Through the sixth.
But what are the hours?
Yeah, I'm glad I asked.
Basically, open all week.
During regular hours or what? Okay, so like nine to five-ish?
So we have somebody manning it, or do we just... How's that working?
So Barney's not here?
Barney can, yeah, he is. It's open right now, as a matter of fact.
So my friend has a locket. But Barney, and is it all three levels?
All three levels are open.
Yeah, it's important, because the middle level's the biggest. When you go to the other levels, you might be a little surprised.
Thank you. Okay, beautification activities. The beautification commission, in partnership with the Mount Airy Garden Club, received a grant to plant native trees and shrubs along the East West Nature Trail. The commission, through motion and within the budget, approved the purchase of two benches for the stage area of the train station to complement the four benches purchased by Mamza for the front of the train station. As well, through motion, they approved the purchase of two trashcans, one for the train station and one for Festpocket Park. The commission renovated Bryson's Field Garden and added border stones. Members worked with the junior girl scouts, making stoneware tree name tags for Wildwood Park as part of Scout Bronze Award. Members dug a new daylily garden in Festpocket and added a border stone around the gazebo. The commission created a new garden at the town welcome sign. And check out the Mount Airy Beautification Commission Facebook page, where they will post opportunities to volunteer to go out and weed and provide maintenance to those gardens. The trash mob met for the second Saturday of June at the intersection of North Main and State Highway Twenty-Seven, the property you were talking about, Carl. They picked up seventy-three pounds of trash, nine pounds of recyclables, in one hour with six people, so thank you to Jan Timmerich for heading up that trash mob. Yeah, definitely the hardest-working, hands-on commission in town. Okay, Parks Board, a young man is trying to organize a Mount Airy Olympics for July twenty-first. Been fitting two local scout troops. Go to mountairyolympics.wixsite.com/2018, and we'll see how that comes together. At a minimum, they're gonna be doing a movie night that evening that'll start at dusk, and the movie is Miracle. So July twenty-first at dusk, Watkins Park, a movie called Miracle. So a free movie night, okay? It's shown in coordination with the Mount Airy Baptist Church. Uh, it's shown in coordination with the Mount Airy Baptist Church. Uh, Rails to Trails, we received a sizable land grant, land acquisition grant from Project Open Space through Frederick County to assist with acquiring the property west of Main Street along the eighteen thirty-eight right-of-way. Uh, we are also waiting for, uh, soil samples to come back on that property, uh, between Hill Street going down to Winding Way and Rambling Sunset Circle. The construction of the Twin Arch Basketball Court will start with a groundbreaking ceremony that we're still putting together for July sixteenth at ten a.m. So everyone's welcome to come out, and we'll stick our hands on a shovel and shove it in the ground, so.
Everybody works at ten a.m., so.
July sixteenth, ten a.m.
July sixteenth, what day is that?
That's on Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
I won't be there, walk out the door.
I'm trial.
Okay.
I'll do it, Virgil.
Uh, the ambassadors, uh, five K challenge will be Sunday, July twenty-ninth at eight a.m. Uh, let's see, uh, this is meant to be humorous, okay? Uh, sometimes you have to preface things that are meant to be funny. So you run the five K, you pray you don't die, then you go to church to give thanks that you didn't, okay?
That was great, Larry.
All right, there you go. Okay, I'm over fifty, so I have to worry about those things. Uh, Camp Night will be August eleventh with Slim Harrison featured for the fam, family fun, child-friendly entertainment at, uh, Camp Night. That's, uh, one night of camping at Watkins Park. New fitness equipment is being installed at Watkins Park that will complement the, um, uh, stretching station that was created by Anthony Faletta, who was getting his Eagle Scout Award. And the skate park continues to be a discussion item following an engineering report. And, uh, site visits that deemed the park unsafe, uh, the skate park is now closed, is closed for now, and the board is evaluating the future use of this footprint. While no decision has been made, the Ford, the board feels our twenty-year-old skate park, if rebuilt, must be created with the realization that skate parks have evolved to new expectations and features. So, more to follow on that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Larry. EDC planning, Bob?
Um, okay, let's see, we had our EDC meeting on Wednesday, June the twenty-fifth. The farmer's market will not be operating Wednesday, July the fourth due to the holiday, due to the Independence Day holiday. Next schedule of Market Day will be Wednesday, July eleventh, three o'clock to seven o'clock. Uh, don't miss the fireworks display on Tuesday, July third, that's Tuesday, July the third, tomorrow, at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Carnival Grounds. The festivities will begin around four o'clock, lots of fun for the kids, live music, food vendors and fireworks at dark. Um, ED's planning, EDC is planning a first Friday Sykesville meeting, tour and dinner on August the third with the Sykesville Main Street Manager. This field trip will replace our regular July meeting, and, and Sykesville does a first Friday event, and so we're gonna go on one of those. The downtown Master Plan Public Workshop, held on June the nineteenth at the reception hall, was a huge success. Forty people were expected, over a hundred showed up. The discussion was lively and invigorating, lots of really good ideas came out. One more public meeting, a charrette will be planned. As soon as the date is released, we'll get back to you. Um, the Greater, MAMSA, the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Commission are working a buy-local campaign. Cards are purchased that offer discounts at specific local businesses. And I must've cut myself off, 'cause it says this, and then it stops right there. So this, um, for the planning commission, there was no June meeting. Um, Alice Settle Raskin is our farmer's market master. Um, she applied for a grant, a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Maryland Agricultural Education and Rural Development Assistance Fund. Her proposal was accepted by the Grant Review Board, so she's, she's jumped the first hurdle, and now the second hurdle involves letters of support from the community. We did this once very recently with, I don't remember what the item was, but we did it once. She's working on kind of a, um, a sample to show you what, you know, what kind of things we're, we're doing with this, uh, with this letter. She will, she's on vacation right now. Um, she called my house at, what, six o'clock tonight, darling? She actually called my wife at six o'clock and wanted to talk to me, 'cause I wouldn't answer my phone. So, um, it's a matching fund-type grant, so it would really be about a twelve thousand, five hundred dollar grant, but it's one of those you can do work in lieu of. So if you were going to, say, pave the parking lot that the, the, um, farmer's market is on, the, the value of that would be part of your, you know, one-on-one. So, um, I guess when, when Alice gets back, we'll have some samples of some letters. And let's see, I didn't even, I didn't even put down when the next meeting for EDC, oh, we're not having the next, next meeting, we're going to Sykesville. That is my report.
All right, thanks, Bob. Uh, sanitation, recycling, Sustainable Maryland, Jason?
Sure, we did not have a Sustainable Maryland, uh, commission meeting last month. Our next, uh, recycling and sanitation is July eighteenth at seven p.m. at Town Hall. Uh, the third week of June, we all attended MML, uh, which is the summer conference that we all attend, uh, took our classes. Um, I had the distinct honor, well, in, in lieu of my place, uh, Councilman King, uh, we received the Silver Award for Heal, which is Healthy Eating, Active Living. Um, my goal for next year is, uh, to get up to gold, so I'm looking forward to working on that. And much of the focus for, uh, MML was sustainability, um, and a lot of our current discussions, uh, for Sustainable Maryland or, and Mount Airy, uh, revolve around those. So, we're very pleased and honored to, uh, stay on the front line of, of those conferences. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, yeah, that was, uh, neat at MML, that, uh, I think we, we, you could see that we had jumped through a lot of hoops, a lot faster than anybody else.
Yeah.
So that's a great job, Jason, great job, that was your lead.
Good job, Jason.
Uh, Streets and Roads, Scott?
Okay, Streets and Roads, um, just one dovetail into, um, sanitation recycling. Uh, when I went to MML, uh, actually, I was able to, uh, attend what some of the other communities are doing with regards to smart trash bins. Um, I know that I sent the council notes, I would hope that maybe in the future you guys entertain something like that, because piggybacking off of that, the town would have the ability to have town Wi-Fi available to everybody through the trashcans. Um, so it'd be a dual-use service that could be beneficial to the residents. Um, so that was something I just wanted to bring up since I wasn't here for the June meeting.
Remember when you said he was our IT guy, now he's talking about us getting Wi-Fi through trashcans? That's just incredible.
The great thing, the, the great thing about him is, is that the cans save, um, the, uh, people for coming to pick it up, because it will not report until the cans need to be empty. Um, so the cans actually keep track of themselves, but at the same time, they'll, they're a Wi-Fi hub that will allow for broadcasting of Wi-Fi. And they're not that expensive, and apparently they do grants on them, too, so, um, it might be something for the town to look into. Hopefully, I'll see that when I come back. Um, the other thing I would end up bringing up is, uh, Oktoberfest, pass that on to the next Streets and Roads person, um, because that's something that I wanna see going on here and get bigger and better, um, just like the Fourth of July events or Third of July. And, um, as far as Council, um, Streets and Road Commission meetings, we did not have a meeting in the month of June. Um, the next meeting will be in August, um, and as I will not be the liaison, I ended up asking the mayor, and I think you guys will determine next council meeting, who can fill in my role until somebody's elected. That concludes my report. Oh, and the, the meeting will be eight twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Water and Sewer, um, Water and Sewer is not going to meeting this month, our meeting would be July fourth. Obviously, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna skip, and our next meeting will be, uh, the first Wednesday of August at seven o'clock in this room. Uh, issues that we've been discussing at, at Water, obviously, we're always looking at water bills and charges and budgets, that's the most of what we're doing at this point, is looking at all those issues.
Torn bills.
We just lost.
Yeah, torn bills, yeah, you already got the, you already got the torn bill report.
We just lost Marsh after thirty years.
Yes, actually, we, we had, uh, our, the person who's been head of Water for the last thirty years in, in Town Hall retired last week. So, we've, we've got some big shoes to fill, but I know that Mary, who's moved up there, is more than capable of doing it. Uh, Monica, Town Administrator?
Um, the only thing that I have that hasn't been mentioned already is, we have a pre-construction meeting on July tenth for the Marydale Gardens Stormwater Pond Project. That's gonna be under construction this summer going into the fall, and then as soon as that is finished, we're gonna be working on the, um, reclamation project for the twin double ponds in Twin Ridge, and that's gonna start in the fall and probably go through the winter. So it's gonna be pretty much continuous stormwater management projects from now until the end of the year, so.
Pat?
Uh, one comment I forgot to make, I did attend a mayor's meeting in, uh, Carroll County up in Westminster. Uh, the Carroll County, uh, Board of Commissioners is doing long-range planning, thirty-year planning, two-year, two thousand and forty-seven, uh, and the mayor's brought up some great ideas, things we should look at. One of my issues was low-hanging fruit. One of the things I did wanna emphasize, I know there's a lot of people out there that are passionate about our Main Street, and I did emphasize to the commissioners, when we're doing our long-range planning, that Main Streets are the hearts of the municipalities, and the municipalities are the hearts of the counties. So I ask them to please remember that when they discuss priority funding areas and incentives to maintain our Main Street. So, that was actually a pretty large meeting, it was televised, and I forgot to note in my report, thank you.
Okay.
President.
Tom?
Uh, since the last meeting, I've prepared the findings and decision for the Board of Appeals on the Green Tree Special Exception, the hearing having occurred before the last, uh, Town Council meeting. Um, secondly, uh, I've worked on an enforcement issue, uh, as well as, um, one sort of loose end on the Marydale Stormwater Management, uh, pond issue. And finally, attended the, uh, MML as well, Open Meetings Act and, uh, Public Information Act, uh, sort of updates, as well as the Maryland Municipal Attorneys Association meeting, which was held in conjunction with the MML conference, so.
All right. I'm gonna move we go into a closed meeting pursuant to three dash three oh five B three, considering the acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Matter's directly related there, too. The two items we may be discussing in closed meeting are police station locations and Rails to Trails. If, I think Larry's, yeah, Larry's saying, yeah, Rails to Trails. Uh, I will so move it, who's gonna be a second? Scott's the second?
No, Bob's the second.
I'm not as tall as him, but.
King? Or it's good-looking. Coria?
Aye.
Held?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Hushower?
Aye.
Okay, and we will be adjourned when we're done with the closed meeting. Carl?